I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Vogt?
Here.
Mr. Chapman?
Here.
Mr. Perrinella?
Here.
Mr. Jeanakis?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Pender?
Here.
Mr. Suttlberg?
Mr. Cassio?
Here.
Mr. Peneisi?
Here.
In accordance with terms of the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting was posted in all school buildings, the administration building, verbal clerks office, public library, three newspapers, and Taffin into on January 18th, 2024. Please be advised there is no smoking on school grounds inside or outside at any time. Please silence all electronic devices and pursuant to district policy number 0167. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes duration. No participant may speak more than once at the same time. Thank you. Moving on. Mr. Penetti's report.
Thank you, Mr. Peneisi. I'd like to ask Ms. Moscolo to come onto the podium. This evening we have a presentation from South Plainfield High School. This evening, students from Mr. Mangieri's Intro to Engineering class project Lead the Way will show us how they designed popular carnival games so that you will not be able to win them.
Thank you, Dr. Tanzi. Thank you, members of the Board of Education. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. I'm really excited. I'll keep my part brief because everyone's way more excited than me talking. Mr. Mangieri does an outstanding job with our Intro to Engineering class as a part of Project Lead the Way. One of the projects, something we'd like to showcase to you, some of the things that were going on, utilizing a lot of things we had throughout the building. So, anything further, Mr. Mangieri? Have fun.
Hello. Scott Mangieri. I'm a math teacher here at the high school. And for the past several years, I've also been teaching Major Engineering class. The class is kind of designed to help students develop their 21st century learning skills. We'll give them a little bit of background in engineering that would be helpful for any, like, basic engineering classes in college. Some of the topics we talk about is our statistics and equilibrium, material science, AutoCAD, and just a lot of stuff. We go through a lot of, like, basic engineering properties. The class is project-based, and as such, it gives them a way to foster some problem-solving, communication, and collaboration skills in a more authentic way than they're used to when they're, like, in the classroom, which is great. And so, we have some students here today. They're going to go over some of the projects they did for the first half of the year. Oh, yeah. The first group is going to talk about their carnival project. Basically, right on, like, the first day of class, they were tasked with making a catapult out of just household items. And using data they collected on their catapult, they were tasked with creating a carnival game, which, just like any good carnival game, is winnable but not too winnable, right? And then, once we moved on to the Fusion 360 AutoCAD software, the second group will talk about how they use that software to 3D model prizes for the carnival game that would be useful to incoming freshmen at the high school. Okay, so I'll yield the rest of my time to them so they can give you kind of the download of what they did and how they... And, yeah, I printed out their presentations for you guys so that they didn't have to say everything they did if you guys wanted to, like, look through and, yeah, see their problem-solving procedures here. So, let the first group come up.
Hi, everyone. I hope you guys are feeling good. I'm actually just trying to use these phrases in this moment. We are probably the first group of Intro to Engineering class that history runs. So, during literally the beginning of the year, during September and October, we were assigned to create a catapult with only a few materials, spoons, rubber bands, popsicles, sticks, et cetera. And with those materials, we had to create a catapult in under a week or so. So, after that, we were assigned to create a carnival game that had to do with restrictions and how many... So, our game is called Cups of Cup. It mostly has to do with trying to, like, throw certain ping-pong balls at the cups. It may all have to go down, but there were certain limitations that we had to add, such as restrictions because we didn't want it to be an easy game. We didn't want it to be a hard game at the same time. So, we had to do, like, a lot of statistics, analysis, accuracy to do with it. So, our statistics show that two out of the 100 tries that we each took, the ping pong ball or rice bag landed in the highest level cup. So, it's winnable. It shows that fact's winnable, but it's not so easy. Okay, so, any of the board members would like to try our game?
Yeah, I'd love to try it.
Okay, so basically, like, the goal of this game is to, like, try to hit, like, the grand prize, which is, like, the little cup. And then, like, this, like, the top part right here, the green cups are, like, it's like a point system. So, if you hit the green one, it's, like, 15 points. The pink one is, like, five points. And then, like, the little one right here is, like, one point. So, it can, like, fall down and, like, hit a bunch of, like, these cups to get more points. But the main goal is to hit this top one. So, yeah, we hit that, like, two times out of them.
Yes, and this is our catapult.
You said you hit it two times out of 100 tries?
Yes.
Well, that makes it a little different.
You were an athlete. The email's going to give it a whirl.
Oh, no. It's about, like, what do you say this is?
I'm just wondering if that came into the calculation when you figured out the distance of the catapult from the board.
We mainly use, like, we like graphing. We have, like, certain quadrants and everything. If they heard, like, a certain region, that means show, like, it wasn't out of, like, out of the blue. Like, it had to do, like, coinciding. Yes, that was part of our testing plan, or our testing, where we had to move our catapult certain distances to see what would work and what wouldn't. So, yeah, this is about, like, four and a half feet that we decided was, like, the best fit.
Four and a half feet. Is that, is that a different game right there?
Yes, that's there. You're not going to try it?
I don't use it. What do I? I use that.
Yeah, I'll demonstrate first.
So, I think it's a week.
$1.
I mean, you need to hold it, like, a little bit with your hands. It's kind of a little hard to work, but...
She's not going to give you any tricks.
Do you have it mounted? What do you guys do?
Mounted? You can't do it on the back.
Oh, you're cheap.
You can hold it up here, but just make sure you're not, like, holding the bag.
I'll give that a whirl.
You had to be the most unathletic board member?
You didn't do it.
Um, yeah, it doesn't matter. It'll do.
I'm looking at the thing and...
Hey, stop doing that on the back.
I got it on the spoon. Oh. Who's next?
I did.
After washing those soup, can we move it closer?
Yeah.
That's why he's the president. He has the smart one.
That's why he plays the yellow tees. Can we move closer?
The forward tees. Back. Move it closer, see?
Listen, I had enough with the music that I tried to play the violin and it was upside down. It was upside down.
Where... Just make sure you're not holding the bag. There you go.
She got it. Come on. Don't tie it. Come on, you got the leverage. Go ahead.
Well, it was, like, it was, like, around there. So...
Oh, they moved it back.
Again.
No, he doesn't want any help. Look at it.
No, you're good?
Oh, that's sad.
So, this is the recommended distance.
It's got to be where you put it on a spoon to, I think, you know?
You know what it's like? It's like the frog game.
It is.
Well, you... We have to take it into account. So, they had, like, weeks to work on the game. So, they had a lot of practice with this catapult. So, they're much better with the catapult.
How much difference can it be? You can pull the spoon back and you let it go.
You just set them up now.
Chris and Alex want to show...
Yes. You got a catapult too?
Yes. Everybody's a catapult. So, instead of rice bags, we use ping pong balls.
They travel farther?
Yes, yes. We hope. Hasn't been tested in a while.
Come on, Tommy, step up.
But each, each cup counts for different points. The prize is 10,000 points. This is 10,000. These two cups are 5,000. If you land in this cup, it rolls through here. That's another 5,000.
What do we, what do we train them in for? Is there a shuffle prizes?
Your ultimate prize is 10,000 points. And then, all of these down here are 500, except the middle one, which is 750.
There's an eraser.
So, yeah, you've got...
Sorry, Tommy.
You've got seven tries.
Oh, my God.
You've got to be careful. You've got to make sure your hand isn't on the ball when it's going.
Clearly on the ball.
Hey!
500. You've got more tries.
Anything between the erasers?
You're not supposed to hold the ball.
It's the bit outside. That's an older.
Yeah, but Harper, you have to do a good, like, seven tries in a row to get this.
Ooh, that was close.
Enough to make you feel like you can do it.
Ooh, this should be a more important try. I tried because you are, like, so tempted.
Do you want to try Harper? Oh, when Harper's percentage was, like, one in, like, five play groups.
Your numbers were much better.
Harper, 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 Harper.
We had to change the... We had two in 50. See, every 25 tries, you get in it once. So, you have a one in 25 chance. Do you want me to help you? So, look, you want to, you want to place the ball on here. And then, like, lower it.
I like these interactive board meetings. We should do this more.
And then, so, we'll wear it down more. And then, watch it.
Tommy, I think she's going to kick your butt.
That doesn't count for anything, right?
No. If it goes off the board, it's zero. Go. Don't shake it. Yeah, you might want to hold it. It's going to be shaky. It's okay? You want to angle it. And then, bring it almost all the way down. Go.
Got the hype?
He's whispering. The pressure's on.
Go. You have 500. Last try.
You got it now.
Down the little car? Go. Another 500.
But she hit the white cup.
No, that counts as, like, 1,000.
Oh, yeah, she hit the white cup.
Oh, yes. If you hit the rim, it also counts.
She did. You only gave her 500.
So, these are 1,000. These are 2,000. So, you get 3,000 points.
There you go.
It's so true. You keep trying. You're at the boardwalk or wherever, especially if you're a kid.
That's what I said. It's the...
That's right. Look at the ground.
Down, please. And I want to make sure you hold the structure. Go. 500. Good job.
Only 25 more tries.
Pink, white. Ooh, pink and white. If it hits the side, it doesn't count.
What?
2,000. 2500. You got 20 balls left. Yeah, you've got 2500.
The magician's on deck.
Well, if you get this one, you can... Come on, you can do it. Hit my face.
Winner. 500. Got it.
That was a great job.
Yeah, thank you guys for trying out their games. I did hear a couple more members say, like, oh, it's like, you want to come back to the game. That was kind of the idea behind, like, the design process is, again, you don't really want the game to be winnable, but you want people to think it's winnable, right? That's what good carnival games. So, our next group is going to go over their 3D model for the prize for the game for incoming freshmen.
Hi, everyone. I'm Chris Chuba. So, our job, we were required for the project to make something that would be enjoyable for upcoming ninth graders, upcoming high schoolers, for the elective fair, something that they would enjoy. And something that many, almost all high schoolers have is a phone. So, we came up with the idea, after days of research, we came up with the idea of doing a phone stand. And it's got multiple uses. You can hold your phone. There's a place where you can slide in an AirPod case. Lots of kids have AirPods. And there's also a small hole right here where you can fit in your pencil. So, it's multi-use. It's useful for any kids in school if they want to hold up their phone, if they're watching something, or if they just like having their phone up instead of down or in their pocket. And that's about it.
We also learned that it can also, like, hold, like, it even hold it, hold, you said, hold a phone up?
Oh, yeah. It can hold, it can hold many heavy items. Actually, for our statistics, we tried out 100 kids. 100 kids put their phones. They had iPads, Chromebooks, keyboards. Yeah, it could fit for iPad. It could fit really anything that, and any electronic except for, like, a big computer. I don't think you want to put down a phone stand, though.
Is it a prize? I'm sorry. Did you say that's a prize if they get so many points on your game?
Yes. So, for our game, if you get 10,000 points, you could win this prize. Yeah.
I'm sorry. So, can I ask you, you designed the stand?
Oh, yes.
And then, how did you make it?
So, we designed it in the 3D software Fusion 360 that we've been learning to use throughout the whole year. And after designing it, we had printed it using a 3D printer.
Could you pass that around so we can look at it?
Yeah.
How long does that take to print, like, from beginning to end?
Uh, ours is, like, four hours, four, three hours in between there. We had to, like, cut inside a hole into it because there's, like, over, like, six hours at the start. This is way over our requirement, which was bad.
If you want to put your phone on, go ahead. Might not give it back if I do that.
How many people ended up winning?
We haven't done that yet. We haven't done it.
None yet.
We fixed the game.
And if it's stupid, don't you board it. Don't move it.
Well, the statistics hold up. You probably need about six of those, right?
That's pretty cool. You've actually had your name in there too.
Also, we did have another member on our team named Kylie Chi. She's a part of Model E-Wed. But she, she helped influence our design a lot. So, we wouldn't have this without her.
Hey, Chris, they had a 2% win percentage. What do you want that?
We had 2%. Yeah, we were required.
Amazingly, a printer made that.
I mean, that's part of your department.
Yeah, I saw that. You had the right leverage.
It is a leverage.
Very impressive.
Great job, guys.
Very impressive. Thank you. You did an amazing job. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mangieri. We also have a pre... Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Congratulations. Make sure you get your prize. We also have a presentation this evening from our student representative, Ikenna Ibaku. I don't know what to say other than this is your second time here, and I can't imagine that you'll top the last time you were here. So, we're all week.
Good evening, all in attendance. My name is Ikenna Ibaku. I was the first student speaker here, like Dr. Lishak said, back in September. But just to introduce myself again, I'm the student council president here at South Plainfield High School. I'm also the captain of our basketball team, and practice was running late, which is why I had late arrivals. So, I'm sorry for that. But I'm also the president of our school's P Club, which is a community service-based organization. Additionally, I'm one of the founding members of our school's Black Student Union, and I'm an active participant in our school's National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, and Model United Nations Club. Now, I'm going to talk about some school events that we've had in the past, what's coming in the future. At the start of February, our Black Student Union decorated an educational bulletin board that's on this side of the high school on different, like, figures throughout Black history and the Civil Rights Movement for all the students to see. Also, at the start of February, we had a drug awareness organization come into our students' gym class and give an anti-baiting presentation to every single student. And on Valentine's Day last week, we had our student assistant counselors doing prizes and games around developing healthy relationships in our newly-founded comm room, which students go whenever they feel, like, too uptight or anxious. On February 29th, the Week Day, we're going to have our triennial pep rally where all the individual classes compete against each other in our competition called Battle of the Classes to see which class will win. On March 7th, we're going to have our district music festival, where I think all the schools are actually going to come and perform their own individual music performances. But our individual high school drama musical is going to be on 22nd, 23rd, and 24th of March. Academically, our juniors will be taking the NJGPA, which is a graduation requirement for the state of New Jersey, on March 11th. During this, the juniors are going to take it in the morning, and all the rest of the students will be operating on a delayed opening schedule and on a delayed opening schedule because they don't have to take the test. We're also going to be running our SEAL by Literacy test on the week of March 5th, which is the test where students who's advanced way past, like, a normal advancement in our oral language courses such as Italian, Spanish, and French, they get the opportunity to take the test. And this test will give them, like, it's called the SEAL by Literacy, signify, signify their excellence in that language. On March 4th, we're going to have our Read Across America, where seniors are going to be, our seniors are going to be going to elementary schools and reading to all the different elementary schools, reading a book and doing activities. This is pretty cool because I remember when I was in first and second grade and the seniors came to my class, I thought it was the biggest thing in the world. So, it's kind of nostalgic now that I'm going to be doing it. And we're going to be having our SAT prep, SAT prep classes offered in the morning with the start of SAT season coming up soon. And we have classes for math, which Mr. Mangieri teaches over there. And we have our classes for reading, which Ms. Mangieri teaches. Also, we're going to have our Model E-Wed Club, which I'm a part of. It's going to be, it's hoping we're going to be taking a trip to Washington DC to participate in a conference over there. Athletically, our winter sports teams have had a great success this season. Starting off with our girls bowling team, which won their division. The boys and girls swimming team each won their division. Additionally, the girls track team also won the division. And the comp cheer team has placed first in three competitions and are competing in states this week, where they hopefully come back-to-back state champions because they won last week as well. Our boys' basketball team won the division for the fourth year in a row, and we advanced to the semifinals of the county tournament, the farthest we've gone in 20 years. The boys' and girls' basketball team each start their state playoff for tomorrow. My boys' team, we take on Governor Livingston as two seed tomorrow at home at 6:00. And the girls are a 14 seed, and they take on Somerville away at Somerville at 6:00. With that being said, I concluded my report, and I believe this will be my last time speaking in here as we have a rotation of students. And so, I would just like to thank Dr. Tanzi, Ms. Belissa, and all other board members for giving me the opportunity to speak here today. Your commitment to giving the students an opportunity to share their voices is really appreciated.
Make us proud. A couple of reminders for our preschool expansion program. I'll be holding a preschool Zoom parent guardian information meeting on March 28th, 6:30 PM. The link is on the district website. I'll provide information on the enrollment process, the lottery, and other important information related to the preschool. So, please make sure that you register so that you can go on and make sure that you're, you have all the information before we open up the preschool lottery. We will be doing the breakfast and lunch balances. We're currently working on collecting open breakfast and lunch balances from all of our open accounts in the schools. Those of you who have an open past due balance may add funds to your child's account through the mealtime system or by mailing a check into our business office. If you feel that you may qualify for free breakfast or lunch, please take the time to complete an application. The process is quick and easy, and you'll get the answer within 48 hours. We also just wanted to remind our South Plainfield community that we are in the process of updating our leases and rental renewals. So, please be advised if your current lease is expiring soon, you'll be required to provide an updated lease to the district in order for the district to verify residency in the borough. This is one of the methods the district utilizes to ensure we have South Plainfield residents enrolled in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Tanzi. Great job, everybody. It's nice to see that, you know, at our meetings. I appreciate you guys doing it. Great job. We did not the last one. Great job. Right now, we don't have any additions or deletions for the agenda. Public comments, any kind of public comments on any item because we don't really have an agenda. And so, any comments on any... Seeing done. Board member comments? Sharon?
I just want to again thank Ikenna for your presentation to us, your information. It's greatly appreciated, and it is really beneficial to us as well to those home and family in our schools. Thanks so much for what you've done. You did a great job. And also, to the students here tonight who did the presentation, tremendous job. It was so much fun. It was really great. You know, if you're really starting to learn that engineering, hopefully, you know, maybe one day you'll be entering a career in that, go to college for it. And it just is wonderful to see what this district is doing, not just simply math, reading, you know, geography, and history. But we have so many other interesting classes now that our students, you know, have the opportunity to take. And this is just one of them, and this was so interesting. Thank you.
I have to agree with everything she said. It was great presentations tonight. Great job. Thank you. I'm still trying to figure out fax machines. So, see how that 3D printer made that little thing? It's just incredible. That came out of a printer, that little telephone stand there. That thing was unbelievable. Great job, guys.
I know. Great, great job. Really enjoyed playing the games. You guys did a fantastic, fantastic job. I loved the statistics and stuff that's behind it. I found that very, very interesting and intriguing. So, you guys did a wonderful job. Thanks for taking your time and coming here tonight and presenting this to us. Great job. I don't know what your plans are for the future, but I think communications or something of that nature certainly be in order. You do an excellent job presenting yourself. And you really do, you're a great representative of the community. So, thank you for coming. And congratulations on a fantastic basketball season. The sharing, you guys are killing it. Good luck in the States. Go Gators. And of course, I would be remiss to congratulate Grace for...
I'll be quick. Great job, Ikenna. Thank you for keeping us informed. Great job, Mr. Mangieri. Continue to influence the lives and continue to shape those minds. A great job to the students in the Intro Engineering class. That's all of us. You guys do it all of us. I mean, when it comes to those games, I thought at least one of us would have something, but...
They should have charged.
I was wrong. Yeah, you guys should have charged us. And last but not least, good luck to our remaining winter athletes, comp cheer, boys' and girls' basketball. Good luck. Go Gators.
Thank you. Any other board member comments? Okay, seeing none at this time, we need to go to executive session. Resolve the decision to vote publicly in a court of court session at this time to discuss confidential matters pertaining to personnel, student matters, and attorney-client privilege. Be further resolved if matters discussed in closed session shall be reached publicly as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Wrong paper. I oppose. I would suspect it might be 45 minutes to an hour before it's come out. And then, we'll go right into the agreement. Thank you. Okay, let's call these banks. Before we approve the agenda, we do have some changes on the agenda. We have a couple of resolutions. We have a...
Hey, I got two resolutions, one is a resident's hearing of student S E, and it says, whereas on November 21st, 2024, residents' hearing was held before the Board of Education. And whereas on that date, the parent of the above-referenced student did not attend the hearing, despite having been in crisis of the right to do so, and that the hearing was pursued in her absence. And whereas based upon the evidence presented, the board finds that the above-referenced student is ineligible to attend South Plainfield Schools due to failure to provide proof of residency. Now therefore be resolved that the board finds the above-referenced student is not entitled to attend school in the district, and further orders that the student be disenrolled from the district. And be it further resolved that at this decision, a family's appeal rights be served upon care as required by law. That's the one resolution.
Okay, where did Chris, uh, we got on?
Uh, student activities.
Okay, so that would be F.
F?
Yes.
And then this, I suppose, could be, correct, student activities, G, which is the.
Excellent.
Was it excellent? Right, okay, so this one, it says, resolve based on the disciplinary charges in the letter dated January 30th, 2024, sent to the student's family, which the board finds to be substantiated, that the suspension of student N D shall be continued for a total period of 45 days, subject to the receipt of medical clearance for the student's return to school. And be it further resolved that the student's family be notified of the board's action, and the right to appeal is required by law. So that's G.
That is G, very good. And then just the other thing is policy. Um, on the Hall of Fame bylaws, the only thing we're gonna do is just add, uh, there that, uh, that current city board members or families can nominate or be nominated for that. That's what we're having there. Right, yeah. And that's it, that'll just be the change in that policy. So now can I have a vote on approving the agenda as amended?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Vote call?
Mr. Voth?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrinella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes.
Mr. Pacey?
Yes. Um, not adjourning, we're moving right into the regular public meeting, and we're going on to comments on agenda items only, public comments on agenda items only. Seeing that? Uh, resolutions approved prior to board meeting, 18 minutes, can I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Vote call, please?
Mr. Voth?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrinella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes.
Mr. Pacey?
Yes.
From A through G. Don't move.
Second.
Discussion? Vote call, please?
Mr. Voth?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrinella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes.
Mr. Pacey?
Yes.
Policy A through C.
Don't move.
Second.
Discussion? Vote call, please?
Mr. Voth?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrinella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes.
Mr. Pacey?
Yes. Under personnel, A through E. Can I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Discussion? Vote call, please?
Mr. Voth?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrinella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes, I'm staying on C1.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes.
Mr. Pacey?
Yes.
And under finance, A through B B.
Don't move.
Second.
Discussion? Vote call, please?
Mr. Voth?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrinella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller? Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes.
Mr. Pacey?
Yes.
Public comments on any items? Seeing none, could I have board member comments? Okay, vote count, it's no now.
I'm gonna.
Just wanna say thanks to Tom Lee and his group for a great job, it's no, thank you, Tom. I also wanna congratulate, uh, Mrs. Murray, Mr. Zada for their new positions, I wish you well, you guys do a great job in those positions. Uh, I wanna congratulate Carol Oldman for retirement, she's been with us a long time, she's a wonderful woman and a great nurse, and she'll be missed. And, uh, lastly, I just wanna say congratulations to the comp cheer team for another undefeated season, they're done, they go to the States on Saturday, I wish you well, and, uh, another one in the books, undefeated, just a great job for them, thank you. And all the other teams that are doing so well, you're lucky, they're there too. I'm all myself. Any other? How can you go? Sharon?
I just love the honor to congratulate Shanti and Dave, um, on their new positions, congratulations, I knew they were great jobs.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, to the both of you, always excited to, to see y'all, and I'm excited to see the work that y'all do.
Any other board members? Very good, that's it, can I have a motion?
Don't move.
For our German.
That's it. Don't move.
Ball paper?
Aye.
Vote pose?
Mr. German.